Okay, the following meeting order at 7:35. All rise and reflect allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, yep, roll call.
Patterson?
Here.
Henderson here, Shaw?
Here.
Sleds?
Here.
Lecky?
Here.
Do we all sign in Becky?
Mm-hmm.
So, as you can tell, there's five people here, and we need a sixth person. So, anybody in the audience that would like to join the planning commission, just submit a letter of intent to the village council and we'll see ya. First Monday of every month, 7:30, right here. Okay, the agenda.
We have to amend it. I forgot to put election of officers on here. So, that'll have to be...
Right after approval of agenda?
Yep, Jorge.
If there's no other changes in the agenda, motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, election of officers. So, we need a president, vice president, and a secretary.
Have we been doing it in bulk or are we doing it...
We have, we got them in bulk. Mike, for your reference, Ben's the chair, Christie's the secretary, and Chris is the...
Vice chair.
Vice chair, and Joe is the treasurer. Because she's the DDA treasurer, so she has to kinda... We don't really need one, but that's for the DDA purposes, she's that.
Right, so the same people are also officers of the DDA. So, planning commission has the DDA duties, but alls we really do is just approve budgets. So, that's why Joe would be as treasurer.
As treasurer.
And you can't serve because you're from council.
Right, so, so I'll vote for Ben for chair, myself for vice chair, and Christie for, what do we call it?
Secretary.
Aye.
Just wanted to make sure I had time.
Okay, a second to the motion?
I did, Chris.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Yeah, I never know what to call our gal at office because she's so much more than a secretary. You know, she's more of an executive assistant. You know, she does pretty much everything. I mean, she's a bookkeeper, she's kinda everything. Okay, so approval of minutes. Our minutes are three pages long, which is kinda unusual for us when we did have a action-packed meeting.
Didn't talk to Jeff Fritz at all anymore about, is there any more discussion?
No, no, but we do that, kind of, no. So, I think we're waiting on the firm capacity reports. I think the water came in, I don't know about the sewer.
Yeah, I think the water.
You haven't heard anything about the sewer, have you?
This motion to approve minutes on November 6th, as presented.
Support.
Mike, you have to abstain.
You can't, you have to abstain because you weren't here. You have to be here to...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstention?
Mike?
Mike, you have to abstain again.
Oh, I abstain.
Yes.
I abstain.
Okay, oh, sorry, so Mike Shaw, our new council liaison, reflecting Dave Conan.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I just figured everybody knew ya. Okay, address assignment. So, we've been doing addresses. Detroit Edison no longer assigns addresses and they've asked the municipalities to do so when we're elected. So, we've done a few of them so far. We wanted to simplify the process and just make it so that the recording secretary could do it.
I didn't put that on here.
Yes, I did.
You did?
I didn't, so I have that as number four. Can be done by recording secretary or chairperson.
Okay, oh, sure.
I gave you a copy of an example.
Yeah, you did, right here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, but the address assessment, that's just the policy, okay.
Well, that's first.
Yes, okay. So, we're supposed to check with the post office to make sure that there's no previously, or previous numbers for that parcel. Number two, make surrounding address, make note of surrounding addresses for that specific parcel. And three, logically determine a number that falls into sequence for that parcel. And we wanted to do this so it didn't have to come to the planning commission and we just wanted to do it executively. So, that was kind of what we had discussed. Everybody's still on board with that one.
Okay.
So, it could be done either by the recording secretary or planning commission chair. Any discussion?
No.
Christie?
No.
Mike?
Nope.
Okay, motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, so address assessment for Barrow Street. So, Katie Nichols sent in a request for a street address and that, is this the address that's been assigned?
Yeah, I'll edit this one right here.
The 757.
Okay, all right, so we have to approve that?
Nope, it's already done.
Edit, okay.
No, I already gave it to him.
Okay, so anyway, so let's do this as we didn't have the thing to process, so let's do this.
But Brian said we were okay because the fact that we created a duplex there, logically, it would have had two addresses.
Okay, all right, okay, so we're cool.
It's more of an informational thing to say that that was the address assigned based on the fact that we had assigned it as a duplex.
Okay, so the original address was 22755 Barrow Street. So, the second address for that duplex, which we created at the last meeting, is 22757. So, the numbers have to stay even or odd, and in this case, they're odd numbers. Okay, so now for, on the agenda, it says to Barrow Street Home Occupation, and it says 22755, so who's got, who's...
Katie's got 55 because that's how she filled out the application for home occupation.
Okay.
So, Katie's gotta have 55.
Right, okay, so this home occupation, we did it in the ordinance where you could, the executive planning commission chair could approve certain things that were very minor or same type of situation, i.e., one of the buildings downtown was a clothing store. They're moved out, but a new clothing store moved in. So, it didn't have to come to the planning commission. It's just the same thing, you can just approve. So, this was, it fell in that realm, and we wrote it to the planner, or we submitted to the planner that that be done by the planning commission chair. But when that ordinance was written, it came back to us and we didn't catch it. They wrote it that the building inspector approved the planning commission process. So, it's one of the things that we'll discuss tonight later on in the meeting, but, so Dennis approved it. Dennis will knew the building inspector approved.
What's it, what does it say in A?
A?
Yeah, something about...
Of use.
Have to think about that. I read it already once, I knew what it was.
There's a T in there. Two-T, S-I-T-Y-E-S-A.
Necessity, necessity of...
Necessity of use, okay. So, and what she wants to do is a hair salon, which is a permitted use in a home occupation. Doesn't say anything about that.
No, it does not. Let me save the whole packet, those, I only did them front door.
Okay.
So...
Okay. Okay, so anyway, that's...
What's it gonna be again? She's gonna do that.
It's a, she's a, I don't know, what do you call those?
Hair salon.
Silversmiths.
They're no longer beauticians.
Well, he highlighted beauty parlor in his paperwork, so...
Okay, all right, okay.
Beauty parlor.
Okay.
Bullshit.
Okay, so 2018 meeting dates.
All right, here we go.
Well, no, first look at this one.
Oh, there's two of them?
The reason I did this...
I see a 19 here too.
Is so that we could pick January 19th here.
Oh, I'm just on fire, aren't you? Only, huh?
At least we gotta, that'll be football national championship night.
Okay, so everybody's got a 2018 and a 2019 calendar. So, the highlighted dates are the first Mondays, except for September.
Yep.
So, September is the only date that falls on a holiday.
Isn't that a wild name? Crazy, only two for the whole year.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a tough week too. Even if we go to the 5th. October's what, the 10th and 24th?
Yes.
Yeah, so those would be council meetings.
Want to target the, go like this one, hit the 5th?
Fine with me. Yep, okay, so September 5th.
And then we'd be January 7th then, right?
Yep.
Becky?
So, we're not gonna do the 3rd?
Or we can do, the first Monday is the 7th?
Go to, and here, and 19.
Oh, 19, oh, okay, okay. Yeah, they're too fast for me here. Or Wednesday and a 2nd, okay, sure.
Yep.
No, 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 January 7th.
7th, the first Monday.
The first Monday.
Oh, first Monday, oh, okay, oh, good, that's much better.
Yes.
Okay, cool, all right.
The other thing I want to point out, and it's just a FYI, April 2nd is the day after Easter, so that's the week of Easter. If anybody goes away on Easter. And July 4th is the middle of the week.
Right, so that weekend.
So, Monday could be iffy. We can always just leave them. If we have business but can't get a quorum, we can change it then. I just wanted to point that out.
Very good, yeah, thanks.
I think that's good.
Those are very FYIs.
Nice job.
Okay, so how about, we'll do the 18 calendar as presented with the addition of September 5th as our meeting date for September.
Okay.
And for 2019, we will keep the first Monday of the month, which would be the 7th. All in favor, or motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented.
Yeah.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, so that's meeting date. So, now we got DDA budget, so that's in here somewheres.
Oh, here we go. We don't need to leave a meeting and come back into them.
No, no, no.
All right, so we're under the general fund now, right?
We, I think we have to open it.
Well, we do, you know what we do? If we do, we gotta go completely out. We gotta close this one.
Close the meeting.
Open the DDA and close this one for the budget because it's a planning commission job.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
Well, then, you can close it, open it, go into DDA, close it, put it back in, and then adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Kinda like a public hearing, we're gonna have to go into the DDA meeting and then...
So, motion to, well, motion to close?
The planning commission. Yeah, well, not close.
Or, yeah, we wanna...
What's our, what's our word?
Suspend.
Suspend, yes, thanks. Dispend our...
Planning commission meeting and then open a DDA meeting.
Yes, budget meeting, okay. Second?
7th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved, okay. So, everybody has a budget in front of them, I think. And alls we're doing, there's no expenditures at this point.
Well, I'm gonna explain real quick, okay? Last year, we kinda did it the same way, but instead, we just paid the bond out of the general fund as an expense that the DDA owed it to the general fund. This time, because they do expect to capture some taxes, as you can see, it says $5,500.
Five dollars, yeah.
And on the advice of the auditor, we're going to transfer money from the general fund into the DDA and make the bond payment, which is all that's there, is the bond payment, the band payment, and the interest payment out of the DDA. Because hopefully, in a year or two, the DDA will then at least be able to make one of its payments periodically as they start collecting a little more money. So, that being said, if we, if we transfer $28,734.50 from the general fund into the DDA, it will cover those payments and leave the account open with 100 bucks.
100 bucks left, yeah.
Providing we capture $5,500 in taxes.
That's if everybody pays, right?
Well, yes, we'll just move that, yes.
The taxes are assessed already.
Correct, so...
So, no surprises like we've had before, you know, with the 5,000? You know, the 5,000 for current year, it is, it is what it is.
It should be what it is, correct. Correct, so, we wanna keep the fund open because if we close the bank account, then we can't capture those funds. So, we need to capture those funds. Hopefully, they'll start coming back in.
Yeah.
So, so we need to propose this budget.
So, there's not a bond payment this year?
There is.
Yeah, there's a $20,000 principal payment.
Oh, geez.
1340 to the interest.
Oh, it just isn't out yet, it will be.
Okay, so it should, it should show Euro instead of Y.
No, it will, it just hasn't done yet.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. Okay, so I'm not gonna reread this, you wanna do it?
No, we even really read, all you need to say is that you are accepting or you're going to propose the DDA budget with the end of your balance of 100 bucks. You're going to propose to send the budget to council for acceptance so that we can adopt it by the end of March. You don't have to read the whole thing. Like, I mean, the explanation was there.
Last year's was easy, but yeah, I know a couple of years we had some issues where the numbers had to be tweaked around again, but last two, last year's was easy, this is not that difficult.
Correct.
So, does the DDA have to pay back the general fund?
In theory, yes. If they ever get to the point that they're making money, yes, that's why we are keeping a record of it on the books. John, the general fund, council does have the ability to forgive any loans from, to any other funds, should they choose, but we're keeping track of it. If they get solvent again, yes, they, you know, they can for sure transfer that.
Sure.
Okay, so, we're gonna recommend this budget summary to council as presented.
As presented, right.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Now, just for reference, well, you might be gone. Mike, if you vote on that on council, then you can't vote, you can bring it back here.
All right, yeah, I can only vote once on two meetings.
Okay.
So, if you wanna abstain on this one, so you can vote in council?
Yeah.
Well, I won't be here February and March, so I don't know if I should.
Oh, okay, you're, make your vote.
Yeah, he's probably gonna miss it, so this is fine.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Very good, all right, so now we get a motion to go out of the DDA and get back into planning.
Yep.
All right, so...
Motion to leave the DDA.
Yep. To re-enter planning commission.
Yep. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, so here we do.
Becky, you put this together?
Yes.
All right.
Right out of the mix.
Out of the manager.
So, just kind of another FYI, so all the, okay, I'm just gonna kind of read what we did for the audience. So, planning commission conducted eight regular meetings, held three public hearings, two for special approval land use, and one for ordinance amendment. So, we approved two SALU applications, one for 73543 Fulton Street, Suzie's Bed and Breakfast, and one...
Mistake.
I keep doing that, turkey, one of that duplex.
I'm sorry, yeah. And one for 22755 Barrow Street, the duplex. Reviewed two Lance Village applications, 74680 Spencer and 73543 Fulton. Reviewed four site plan applications, Rustin Relics, Mike Locke, Taylor Marie Photography and Main Page.
Stage, it's always saying, nope, stage, that's DDA.
Mount Main State, Good For The Soul. Okay, we approved two temporary sign applications. They're made of jams and are made of fair. So, that was for the banners in the park and over Fulton and Main Street. Is it on Main Street too?
Yes.
And then approved sidewalk cafe for cozy corner. Amended, so amended the sign ordinance, and we still have a vacancy and conducted DDA business. So, if you look back...
We didn't get Duncan in this year?
What's that?
Duncan was last year?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, if you look at what we said we were gonna do for '17, we said we were gonna do the sign, do something with the sign ordinance. We did that. We were gonna do the administrative review and SALU. Those we didn't do because...
We were busy.
We were busy, yes. So, and then there was the cell tower thing and the fences and kind of do some permitted use discrepancies in the chart. So, we did at least some of the stuff that we said that we wanted to do. But some of these meetings were pretty long that we had.
Yes.
And pretty intensive. So, with public hearings, every time you do a ordinance change, there's a public hearing, so the three public hearings and one public hearing, we had two public hearings at the same, in the same meeting. Okay, so...
We didn't assign, we didn't assign any addresses?
Yeah.
I thought we did one.
Yeah, we did.
We did...
We did...
No, we did Duncan, and Duncan was last year.
No, fuck.
No.
No, we did not.
Didn't get a new address?
No, she built one house.
Yeah.
We split the property, didn't get a new address though. The only one we did was Duncan so far, and he was last year.
Yeah, so we didn't assign an address to the lot we split?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, I don't think we have to, so we're gonna present this to council and then for our agenda for '18, we still have the administrative review, SALU, the cell tower, fences, and the same permitted uses discrepancies.
And any normal business, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, and a normal business. So, how about a, is there any discussion on any of that?
No, that's fair. I don't think there's anything special, I mean, anything else that we were hitting on.
No.
No defined training or development needs that were out, that are out there because of changes in code, state, you know, laws or whatever.
No, but we did, those are some meetings.
We did.
So, that was an extra thing that we did, started the training.
Was that last year, you went before?
No, that was, we went last year.
We were supposed to go to the one that you didn't go to.
Yeah, yeah, we went to one, signed up for two.
Yeah, I did leave it before. I think usually when, yeah, it was 2017.
I don't think you went to any in '17, but I could...
Well, that could be. Yeah, you're right, yeah, those were all the year before, because Paul went.
Yep.
Then I went.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right, then the second one never happened or whatever.
Well, nobody else wanted to go, and I said I'd go, and I got home at 7 o'clock and I needed to be on the road at 7 o'clock. I didn't know where else, Paul needed to be there at 7 o'clock.
Well, while you're on that subject then, in the package is something that came from the Michigan Association of Planning, and here's a few things that they're offering. We would have to go to council and ask for money because it wasn't in our budget for money.
Right.
And these are all before the fiscal year ends. But I would like to say that I myself would love to go to the Planning and Zoning Essentials. That's the very first one. Anybody that, if, you know, even if Christie could go, it's during the day, it's an afternoon thing.
So, three days, yeah. I tell you, when I remember that whole day of the Citizen Planner program, that was pretty good. I don't know if those who went before me, because if the program has changed, even now, the couple of years when I look back at the program again, it's the changes they made to, like, I think mine was better than this one, so...
And why, you didn't have $500 in the budget?
For training?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, we kept training in there.
Well, there is $500.
Well, how much?
It's $130, I didn't print the whole thing.
Okay, 130 bucks a person?
So, that'd be a lot for just that one meeting. Is that what it is?
Yeah, 130 for that one. The capital improvement programs are 25, site plan's 135, planning's 130, ZPA's 125, and managing risk is 125. Just that I, I mean, that's I... Just that, I mean, that's, I only presented it in case anybody, um, you know, site plan review might not be a bad, um,
No.
For those that haven't, haven't, you know,
Yep.
Had any formal training.
The Planning and Zoning Essentials, and then Site Planning, yeah, definitely.
I mean, definitely something to think about, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you wanna add it to the twenty eighteen agenda as, you know, an option, or potential? Uh, what do you call it?
To attend.
Official training by the Michigan Association of Planning as.
Well, we could even put, you know, seek, you know, Michigan Planning.
The Michigan Association of Planning.
Yeah.
I think I was a member of these guys years ago.
Like, even if you put on there something about training, you know, um, however you wanna word.
Training as needed, training as.
Um, availability, or, you know, 'cause you don't always get a lot of opportunities.
No, right, you happen to find any of those books?
I do not have, I meant to tell you, I don't, I can't.
Okay, I've got one.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't, I don't imagine I would've thrown them away when I.
No, probably not, but I think I have one.
Through the drawers in the next section. So, we can add that to the eighteen agenda.
Formal Planning Commission training is.
Must be a one.
And maybe if I see yours, I'll say, oh, yeah, I saw the book, this is right below.
So, I kind of, uh, um, here we go.
You know, let up some web, she can't read.
Yeah, I know, but. It's just, it's just a list of topics.
Yeah.
We can throw that away. You guys don't recycle, do you?
That's some dish.
Okay. Okay, so, um, when do you need to know that?
Hey, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I have just something to think about, we can, you know, everybody can look at it, see if there's any that work for them, I can see what the availability is.
Okay, so this is February, this is DDD, so the one is March.
I mean, that one would be ideal, 'cause it's Franklin, if it's not that far away, neither is West Branch. That one, the other one is.
Lansing.
Lansing.
Don't they have, um?
Oh, we can still look for other classes.
Yeah.
Just what came.
Aren't some at the, behind the jail?
Yeah, the Michigan, the MSU extension.
Yes.
But I don't know that they do individual subsection versus the whole program, though.
Uh, that I don't know either.
That's what I'm just, but that's what I was just looking up to see, I, because I noticed, the first one here is, it counts as, counts as two sessions of the MSU Extension Citizen Planner.
It's just, you know, something I can look up, look and see what, you know, what's out there, if anybody's interested in some other training.
I can't do this one, or the third one, third date and this one.
Well, I don't think that these are all three days you have to do, I think.
No, it's, I'm saying, if you were picking out of there, I can't do the third date, and I can't do this date. But the rest of the dates would be considered, you know.
Or. We could do an in-house training thing again.
Well, we could look into that. Ideally, I'd like to fill that other sheet, because we do anything too extensive.
But if we did that one, I think, I, uh,
Originally seven.
I'd call the township up and ask them if they would wanna go along with it.
Oh, there you go. Okay, well, could just, you know, we could just say, look into additional.
Sure.
Training for two thousand and eighteen.
So, but we should, uh, wow.
Do you know that the Citizen Planner now can be done completely online?
Hmm, sure.
Yeah. Fifteen hours to complete. Two hundred and seventy title programs.
Oh, okay, so. So the village and MAP member?
No. Which I could look to see what membership would cost, to see what it would save.
And I'm not sure if the village has to do it, or each of the, because I, when I did it, I, I just, I became a member myself.
Well, I can look into that.
Yeah. 'Cause it's a thirty, thirty-dollar savings on the Planning and Zoning Essentials. It doesn't say when you have to register by.
No. Yeah, I can talk to Brian and see what he knows is all, if there's other.
Sure.
Other stuff.
How about, um, calling, uh, Macomb County Planning Commission, to find out if they know of anything.
Okay, I can do that.
I think John Paul Ray is still there. I think he's ahead of the Planning Commission. Okay, so let's do some kind of training.
So, yeah, someone wanna wait in here?
Nothing, but for further discussion. So how about if, uh, we're gonna do something like this March thing? 'Cause the February thing, uh, we'd have to make a decision prior to our next, before our next meeting. So how about, can you have something maybe in the next ten days or so?
I'll see what's out there, I'll do, I'll do some work and see what else is out there.
Okay.
And then we'll look for that.
Yeah, 'cause when we, when we did it in-house, it was a thousand bucks.
Right. It was good, actually, it was very, she did a very good job, and I think, quite nice, I think Brian would do an awesome job as well.
I think so, too.
So, but, let's see what else we can do. See what else we can find. So I just added two thousand and eighteen, look into additional training.
Yep, yep. And, uh, I'll find that book.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, public comment, and.
Well, do you wanna get a motion to, for you to send this to council?
Oh, yes, yes, let's do that, yes, sorry.
To twenty seventeen year, or, review.
And eighteen.
The eighteen agenda.
Yes. So that was a motion?
That, that was a motion.
Yeah.
That is a motion.
Yes, I get that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, so now we're going on to public comment, so, um, chairs are empty, so thank you very much. Um, chair report. So, um, uh, Mike asked about Fritz, there's really nothing happening, I think we're waiting for the, um, wastewater, sewer, firm capacity results, information. And once that's in, uh, then I kinda expect Fritz to do something within a couple of weeks, at least contact us and start moving forwards if there is available capacity. Nobody's really contacted me about anything else. The last time I looked, um, the, uh, Mike Locke thing on Teed Street, uh, that building's still not done. Uh, they did a real nice job building the building, um, and it's black with a silver roof, which I kinda thought would be funny, but looking out my back door and through the trees, when the leaves are gone, the building actually looks pretty nice back there.
Sure.
So, and they were supposed to do a cement driveway or asphalt driveway, uh, like I said, the building's not done, I don't even think they're working on it there, so that's not done either, so I really don't expect it to be completed next year. Yeah. Yeah. So then I, um, did call Larry's Automotive about parking vehicles on the north side of the mound, which was not in their approval, and they kinda promptly moved stuff and said that they forgot and wouldn't park there anymore. So, um, other than that, that's my chair report. Okay? So, anybody got anything else? Mike, wanna make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that, uh, eight fourteen, that we would adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody wants to stay? Okay, cool. See you next month.